I call this meeting to order and welcome everybody to the June 13th meeting, the Dover Sherburne, or sorry Dover School Committee, Sherburne School Committee, and the Dover Sherburne Regional School Committee. This meeting is commonly referred to as a Joint School Committee meeting. My name is Dennis Quant. I'm the Chair of the Sherburne School Committee and also will be taking the role of Chair in the Joint School Committee meetings for this coming year. And I'd like to call this meeting to order at 6:32 PM. We're pleased to hold this meeting, this open meeting at the Dover Sherburne Middle School. And we're also live streaming this on DSC TV. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. Before we kind of get to business here, given that there have been a number of elections and sort of changing of positions, I figured it would make sense maybe to just go around and have everybody introduce themselves and give a little background which committee they're on and whatnot. I can start and we'll maybe go this way. Dennis Quant from the Sherburne School Committee, this is my, I think, third, three and a half year mark on the Sherburne School Committee. I have three kids in Pine Hill.
Jeff Cassidy on the Dover School Committee. I have two kids in the Chickering Elementary School. Actually, one is finishing this week. This is my end of second year with the Dover School Committee.
I'm Kate Potter. I'm on the Regional School Committee. It's my, entering my fifth year on Regional School Committee. I have three kids, two of whom have graduated from DS and one who is almost a sophomore.
Maggie Sharon, Regional School Committee. This is my seventh and last year on the school committee and my three children are all DS graduates, most recently in 2022. They're grownups now.
I'm Jessie Hull. This is my second meeting. First joint meeting, I am now part of the Dover School Committee and I have three kids. Almost three-year-old, a just-turned-six-year-old, and a seven-year-old.
Hi, everyone. I'm Martha Castle and I'm brand-new to the Dover Committee as well, so thank you for letting us join. I have two kids. One is a second grader at Chickering and the other one is a sixth grader at the middle school.
I'm Angie Johnson and this is my beginning of my second term on the region. I filled in for a vacancy last year, so I'm actually starting year two and a half, I guess, is what we call it. And I have three kids. I have one who is a graduate of DS. She's right over there. She graduated in 2020. And then I have a son who just graduated. He did not go to DS, but he graduated last week. And then I have one who is a rising freshman. I don't know, no more middle school, and I'm really sad about that, actually.
My name is Christine Walsh. I'm just finishing up my first year on the Sherburne School Committee. I have a fourth grader at Pine Hill and a first grader at Pine Hill.
My name is Judy Miller. I'm the Chair of the Regional School Committee. I have two children who are adults now, who went K through 12 through the DS system and have both now graduated from college.
Nice. My name is Mark Healy. I'm entering my second year on the Regional School Committee. I have three children who are entering grades seven, nine, and 11 after summer break.
I'm Becca Hammond. This is also my second meeting, first joint meeting. I have two kids at Pine Hill, Dylan who's in third grade, and Oliver who's in first grade.
I'm Kristin Aberley. I'm finishing up my first year or starting, finishing first year. I am on the Sherburne School Committee. I have three daughters, all at Pine Hill. One of whom will be going to the middle school next year.
I'm Goliseh Peir. This is also finishing my first year and entering my second year at Dover School Committee. I have two kids at Chickering, one a rising second grader and rising fifth grader.
Hi, I'm Liz Grossman. I'm the Chair of the Dover School Committee this year, coming year. This is my two and a half years on the Dover School Committee. I have three kids, one in first grade at Chickering and one in fourth grade at Chickering and one in sixth grade at the middle school.
I'm Colleen Burt. I just finished my term on the Dover School Committee and I just begun my term on the Regional School Committee. I have a fourth grader and a sixth grader and, and fourth graders at Chickering, and I'm very happy to be here.
Thanks, everybody. So I guess, everybody returning, I guess, huge thank you. This is incredibly important responsibility, not just for our kids, but for the entirety of the community here, so thank you, those that are new. Welcome to the rodeo. Definitely ask lots of questions. It's a lot of fun and it's a great way to get involved and kind of help further all of the work that so many of us are doing here in the town, so thank you. Next item is the Union 50 reorganization. So, Union 50, for those that are not aware, is sort of a combination of members from both the Sherburne School Committee, the Dover School Committee, and then all of the members of the Regional School Committee. And the point or the reason for that entity is to carry out sort of the business of the two towns collectively in hiring the superintendent and a couple other sort of items. And to just make sure that we acknowledge the membership, as a lot of the rosters have changed, we wanted to just recognize the folks that are on that role. From the Sherburne School Committee, it is myself as the Chair of the Sherburne School Committee, it's Amanda Brown, and then it is Christine Walsh as well, as the Secretary for the Sherburne School Committee. For the Dover School Committee, it's Liz Grossman, Jeff Cassidy, as well as Goliseh Peir. And then, as I mentioned, the Regional School Committee membership is the entirety of the Committee itself.
And may I clarify, there's three voting members?
Three voting members.
On the region, so those would be, those need to be decided?
Non-voting.
Excuse me, non-voting members. If there was a Union 50 meeting where it's hiring the superintendent, it would be all six involved. So, is that by seniority as well done? Yeah, so the most senior members of the region are?
Maggie.
Judy, Maggie, and?
Kate.
Kate. Great. Thank you.
So they will be the voting members?
Non-voting members.
Non-voting members. Great. Any other questions?
So we do need to vote a Chair in Union 50?
We do need to vote a Chair.
And, yeah, Chair and Secretary.
All right. Great. So I would like to call a motion to, well, I guess, so the Chair would be offered nominations for, so I would like to offer nominations for the Union 50 Committee.
And it should only be people on Union 50 who should participate?
Just the voters or the non-voters?
The voters.
Okay, so not the?
Yeah, so the six people that he needs, those six will elect the Chair and Secretary.
So does anybody have a nomination?
I'd like to nominate you, Dennis.
Any discussion? All right. So we'll do a vote?
Of the six members?
Of just the six members. Do we have to do individual or can we do?
No, we can just do it.
All in favor? Hi?
Unanimous.
Unanimous, right? All right, thank you. And then for a Secretary, like to take a, any nominations? From the voting members?
So that should be the votes?
Yep. So I would nominate Liz Grossman as a Secretary for Union 50?
Christine Walsh, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous again. All right. Liz, thank you. Great. Any other business for Union 50? So now that we've gotten some of that out of the way, I think the next item on the agenda are community comments. Before we kind of go into that, I wanted to just poll the audience or anybody up here if there are any community comments? Yes? Thank you. So before you provide those comments, I just have a quick sort of preamble, just to kind of govern how the information is shared and set expectations around what your roles are and ours as a committee. We provided a Zoom link for those who wish to make a community comment, but for whom it's not possible or prefer to not attend in person this evening. Please remember that community comments are an opportunity for members of the school committee to listen to members of the community. As Chair of this meeting, it's my responsibility to facilitate this communication between the public and the three committees present this evening. I personally believe this communication is a critical element to assist members of these communities with discharging the responsibilities of the positions they have been elected to hold. To effectively facilitate this discussion, I encourage anyone providing comment to consider that the volunteers that comprise these committees are your neighbors, your friends, and fellow community members. We welcome all points of view, but I would respectfully ask that you treat them in a manner consistent with that in mind. Collectively, we're here to support the administration, who in turn assists our educators and support staff to educate, care for, invest in, and inspire our children. Community comments are not a forum for answering questions or engaging in debate. We respectfully request that you please make your comments brief, no more than three minutes, and you move the discussion forward by adding new information. Please try to avoid repeating points that have already been made. Once the public comments section of the meeting is concluded, we'll move on to other business and unsolicited comments from the community will no longer be permitted. This is standard operating procedure in the school committee meetings across our three districts. If you desire more information or have specific questions, contact information is on the district website. So, any community comments?
Sure. Where should I speak to you?
You can speak right there to the entire committee if you just say your name and, you know, relationship to this committee, whether reside here or whatnot.
All right. Thank you for giving us the time, an opportunity to speak today on the important subject of DEI and somehow controversial subject.
Who are you?
Oh, I am saying that.
Okay.
I am Tom Dupre and have been a music teacher at Dover Sherburne Middle School for 24 years. I currently teach general music classes and also direct the two jazz bands. I am also a co-advisor to the GSA. I will begin and end my time with the same excerpt. "Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." We hear this and some of us recite it every day of the school year. I'm not sure who else pays attention to these words every day, but I do. As a music teacher, I work at giving each child a chance to experience their creative expression and fulfillment using music as the medium. "You be here now" is a universal idea and concept for Jeff, Janice, and me. "You" is the most important word of the four, and I truly try to get to know each individual student and make human connections. I ask each student to find their value as soon as they can. What is your value and how will it help your group and the class? In other words, how do you belong? Humans need to feel that we somehow belong and are valued. So I see diversity, equity, and inclusion as number one when I teach because each student is included, treated equally, and highlighted by their diverse selves. When I have my GSA cap on, I personally think that I'm doing the same things as in my music classes, except with a smaller select group of students, much like the jazz bands are a smaller select group of the concert bands. The students who come to lunch with me identify in different ways, straight as allies, gay, trans, non-binary, et cetera. I don't know why, I don't question them, I simply accept them for who they are, helping them to feel like they belong in this school and in the group, just like in music class. Fred Rogers has been a hero of mine since I was very young, and I'm going to read a lyric to one of his short songs. "It's you I like. It's not the things you wear, it's not the way you do your hair, but it's you I like. The way you are right now, the way down deep inside you, not the things that hide you. Not your toys, they're just beside you. But it's you I like, every part of you, your skin, your eyes, your feelings, whether old or new. I hope that you'll remember, even when you're feeling blue, that it's you I like. It's you yourself, it's you. It's you I like." So simple and yet somehow very difficult for some people when we talk about our GSA friends. Diversity, equity, and inclusion for everyone at DS pre-K through 12. We cannot do this without talking with each other and seeking first to understand, without bias and false narratives or misinformation. Listen and talk as individuals who care about all our children and who they really are and help each one of them to understand that they belong as they are. We are all here on this planet as humans. Communication and community and collaboration. Can we achieve that? Get together in person when we have ideas, concerns, and questions? I know my door is always open. I'll now end with the quote I began with, "Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Good evening. My name is Christine Atkinson. I have been a classroom teacher at DS for the past 17 years. When I decided to make a change from being a manager at a public relations agency to be an elementary teacher, I had no idea that Dover even existed. What I did know is that I had love for kids, and love set me down a new path, a path that has led me to right here. Over the past 17 years, a lot has changed. Some changes have been, in my opinion, for the better, and some changes I have really struggled to understand and accept. And let's be honest, nothing really prepared me for the changes that COVID has and still continues to bring to the classroom each day. This has been a hard year for many reasons. And with all that change, I worked to remind myself that there is one thing that has stayed the same, my love for kids. And it is that love that brings me here tonight. Tonight, I have come to say thank you. Thank you to Beth and Denny for working each and every day to make our schools better than they were the day before. Thank you to our administration, Deb and Jim, for being active listeners and for helping me navigate some of the new challenges that I have faced this year. I know that all of you put your heart and soul into DS, and please know that the work you do is appreciated. And thank you to all the school committee members. Sometimes making decisions can be hard, and all of you continue to show up each and every meeting to make those decisions and move our schools forward. I love kids, and all I've ever wanted to do is create a classroom where each one of them feels loved, feels smart, feels heard, and feels like they belong. Because it isn't until a child feels all of those things that they can truly be empowered to make a difference, and isn't that what we all want? As a DS educator is what I strive for each day, and with all of your support, most days we get there.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sarah Collins. I'm a sixth-grade teacher for five years here at DS, a team leader, and I'm one of the GSA co-advisors. And I also wanted to say good evening and thank you to Beth and Denny and the school committee for the support that you have shown in the last year. And I'm honored to address you today to share the incredible impact of that ongoing support in our diversity, equity, and inclusion work. In my experience, when we actively acknowledge and embrace the unique identities of our students, something magical happens. Their faces light up, their body language relaxes, and they become more willing to take academic risk. By affirming their identities, we create a safe and inclusive space for them to flourish as learners. When we explore topics such as the Middle Eastern civilization, it's remarkable to witness the engagement and enthusiasm of students who hail from those regions. Reading articles authored by female scientists empowers our young girls to envision themselves as future STEM leaders. Additionally, respecting and using the pronouns of our students that they request help them feel seen and validated in their authentic selves. By continuously affirming and acknowledging the identities of our students, we are nurturing, nurturing their growth into resilient, confident, and compassionate adults. It is through these intentional actions that we foster a sense of belonging and empower our students to navigate the complexities of the world with grace. However, we must recognize that DEI work is still an ongoing process that requires resources and support. I urge the committee to continue to support for professional development, curriculum enhancements, and community engagement to sustain and expand our DEI initiatives. Together, let's seize this opportunity to create a transformative learning environment where all students, regardless of their background or identity, can thrive. By investing in DEI, we are not only shaping the future of our students, but also fostering a society that celebrates diversity and raises inclusivity. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
My name is Jennifer Sunday. I am an art educator here at DS MS. I am also the tech director for our school's drama program, and I am a 15-year teacher. I have been co-advising GSA this year, and it has been one of the most eye-opening, beautiful experiences for me as an educator so far. As a middle schooler, I was bullied endlessly for being different, and my drive to become an educator was so that I could stand up and protect my students and create an atmosphere for them to express themselves and collaborate with others and feel like their presence here has a purpose and a reason and that they're welcome. With their permission, I have three anonymous pieces of poetry written by students in our art lab for GSA, where they've used art as a way to express themselves. I have not seen these kids up until this point of the year feel so free and relaxed and happy, finding their peers that they feel that they really identify with in their group. This one is a sixth-grade student, anonymous. It says, "I am proud. I wonder what the future holds for me and others around me. I hear discrimination against others, though I try to silence it. I see the people who support me on my journey, and I want to be understood by my peers. I am unique. I pretend that I can live through any problems. I feel like I could combust into emotion at any point, though. I touch my pencil to distress through my art. I worry that I will never be able to truly express myself. I just want to be seen and heard. Sometimes I even cry myself to sleep. I am a person too. I understand only a small portion of myself, though I learn more every day. I say whatever pops into my head, and I dream of acceptance. I try to be the best I can. I hope to be an amazing human one day, but I am proud to be me." This one is also anonymous, a sixth-grade student. "I am myself. I wonder what other people think of me. I hear my heartbeat in my ears, and I see many fears and show it with my tears. I want to meet other people like me, but I am scared to let them see into my heart's peephole. I pretend to be straight. I feel like I'm trapped in a body that's not mine. I touch my face and I worry I am never going to win that race. I cry because I feel horrible, and I'm sad because I feel like girls are adorable. I understand that I will be one day okay, and I reassure myself and say, 'I can be gay.' I dream to be accepted. I try not to feel rejected. I hope that I can exist, and if not, I just can't do this." These are all very powerful messages from our students, and this one was actually written by a student who titled themselves "Human Being, But An Ally," who has come to every single GSA lunch bunch meeting this year. "I am supportive of the people created different. I wonder what other people think. I hear the happy remarks of my friends who get to be themselves, and I see rainbow flags, diversity, and the colors of freedom. I want to see people comfortable in their own skin and pronouns. I am an ally. I pretend the haters don't exist. I feel joy when I see people comfortable in their own skin. I touch the hands of my friends to join them in the fight. I worry about the mindsets of older generations. I cry tears of joy at the thought of equality. I am a supporter to everyone, no matter their differences. I understand that pronouns are confusing, but I still try. I say, 'Don't fear things that are different.' I dream of a place where everyone feels safe. I try to help the fixed mindsets change. I hope to help change the enemy that is adversity. I am not LGBTQ. I am Black. I am a female, and I do support." These pieces created by these students show intense bravery and their desire to want to fit in and be treated equally, and that each and every one of our students here is unique, and we need to raise them up for that, not push them down. Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah.
So Judy and I didn't make our formal remarks, but we are also here to thank Denny and Beth, the DSEA, and Beth. Judy and I have worked with them all year long, and it is, we want to celebrate and congratulate them on a year that has shown us that they have brains, they have heart, they have soul, and they have strength, and we are so glad that they do have those things. So thank you on a year well done.
Anybody else?
I'm Anna Scott Johnson, and I'm from Sherburne, and I'm a DS grad. I graduated in 2020, as my mom said. I just wanted to thank the committee for their DEI work and urgency to continue. When I was in the high school, we had some incentive hate crimes, and all that was handled was people from those minority groups were put on stage to say how they felt, which just felt like an interesting response. So I hope that we can keep working towards how to respond better and how to make these never happen, so that shouldn't have happened to begin with, and just hopefully we can handle that better. Thank you.
Thanks, Anna. Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Kim Phelan. I've been teaching here for 17 years, US History and Cymics. I was military before this, 15 years in the Army. We were doing DER in the Army long before I came here to DS because you can't understand and work together with people who are different than you unless you can understand them. And that's the most important part of the DEI work that we're doing, is helping kids to understand the world beyond DS, the world beyond their own personal identity, their own personal body. If they can't understand that, they're not going to be able to be active in our democracy. They can't be productive citizens. I can't tell you how important this work is, and we really appreciate the support for it. Our kids need it, they know it, they recognize it when they see it, and it's something that we need to keep doing. Thank you.
Thanks, Kim. Maggie?
I just, I have had a request from a citizen to leave a statement on her behalf tonight in community comments. So just reading the statement. "I am Bethany Burke from Dover Claybrook Road. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. First and foremost, I extend my sincere congratulations to the newly-elected members of the school committee. Your victory is a testament to the trust and confidence that our community has placed in you. I trust that you will bring your passion and dedication to the important task of shaping our education system for the better. During my campaign, I had the privilege of engaging with numerous individuals who shared concerns and aspirations for our schools. I listened attentively and feel it is my duty to convey the valuable information I have gathered from these conversations. One recurring concern expressed by constituents is the need to find common ground on DEI initiatives. While we all recognize the importance of fostering a diverse and inclusive environment, there is genuine apprehension that some initiatives may silence diverse perspectives or exclude differing viewpoints. To address these concerns, we must engage an open and respectful dialogue, ensuring that our DEI efforts remain inclusive and respectful of all voices in our community. Another significant concern raised by parents and constituents is the preservation of academic rigor. They fear that the resources and attention that are being devoted to social-emotional learning, culture-responsive teaching, and data-driven systems may divert us, our focus away from core subjects. Striking a balance that allows us to provide well-rounded academic education while addressing unique needs of our students is paramount. Transparency emerged as yet another crucial issue. Many constituents expressed a desire for clearer communication regarding curricular changes and school committee decisions, particularly in areas such as safety policy and health education. By enhancing transparency and fostering open lines of communication, we can build trust and ensure that parents are well-informed about matters that impact their children's education. Lastly, the safety of our schools was of utmost concern. Parents rightly seek reassurance that our schools provide secure and nurturing environments for children, for their children. We must prioritize the implementation of comprehensive safety measures, including proactive bullying prevention, robust mental health support, and thorough emergency preparedness plans. In conclusion, I offer my sincere congratulations once again to the newly-elected school committee members. Together, let's find common ground on DEI initiatives, maintain academic rigor, enhance transparency, and prioritize the safety of our schools. Despite our differences, we share a common goal of providing the best education for our students. We have more in common than what sets us apart, and with open minds and hearts, we can easily bridge the gaps that divide us. Thank you."
Thanks, Bethany. Thanks.
We have Rob Andrews, who is online and would like to speak.
I can't see you guys or hear you, but can you hear me? I can hear you a little bit, but can I, can you hear me?
Yeah, hang on, Mr. Andrews. Let's see if I can get you on. Can you try speaking again?
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you, but we're trying to get you on the overheads. Say hello.
I'm happy to, I'm happy to just start reading if you want for sake of time. I know how busy you guys are.
Okay, yeah, we'll do the best we can. Speak as loudly as you can.
All right, great. So thank you, everyone. Many of you know me. I sent this via email, so if folks want to understand a little bit more- I, I sent this via email, so if folks want to understand a little bit more, that's, that's fine, too. "I find it such a blessing to be able to live in Dover. I'm speaking today because after the last few school board elections, I feel that I have to speak up. It is clear outside interests or national politics or something has taken hold in our towns. Misinformation about our schools coupled with anger and fear about the quote 'other' seems to be motivating a small minority of our neighbors. I am unsure of the motivation, but in such a small town, I hope we can try to build a more civil communication between all of us. I know as a two-dad family, our very existence seems threatening to some. Yes, we are different. Our children experience life differently, but we also share so many commonalities with most families at chickering. I have been incredibly proud that my children have had educators who acknowledge our family as a possibility in the world, because it's just the truth. We exist. I am proud that the chickering, that chickering formed a rainbow club. My sons have zero interest in joining it, but I can imagine what its existence would have done for my self-worth as an elementary school student if my principal had made that choice. Times were different in the early 1980s, though. Research shows that LGBT youth have a higher incidence of suicide than their peers. The work of our schools are going, the work that our schools are doing to be more inclusive saves lives, many of your children's lives, but more important, our neighbors' children's lives. I understand that there has been some fiery rhetoric at past school board meetings over the past year. As I near 50, I've heard this all before, and although it hurts, I can handle it as an adult. But I think about my friends' children, who are just trying to figure out who they are in the world, those children who have yet to experience the hate-filled rhetoric so close to home. What do they think when the beautiful and resource-rich communities such as ours has members telling them they don't belong? Not just what we say, but how we speak impacts our children, and not just children in the abstract, but our towns' children, the ones we see riding their bikes to the library to get hot cocoa, the ones who wash our cars at the townhouse, the ones who play for our entertainment, the ones who win sports tournaments bringing us hometown pride, and the ones who get those outstanding scores on standardized tests that makes our property value rise. They hear how we as adults talk to each other and treat each other. I know that many people in town are concerned with cultural shifts happening around us. In many ways, I am too. Perhaps not for the same reason or the same shifts, but I have empathy for those fearing the unknown and how it will impact our children. With that said, remember where we live and who we are as a community. We have to treat each other better, even if we disagree. We have to trust each other and trust our educators more. Many of our school leaders, elected and hired, are our neighbors, not radicals or fascists lurking behind our social media feeds. We have to do better for ourselves, and we have to do better for our children. If you hear something that sounds absurd, it probably isn't true. Our kids are listening to us and need better than what we have just witnessed this past year. My life experience and research has shown me that those with the highest degree of disgust or discomfort with homosexuality or different gender expressions typically are struggling with something inside themselves. I will give some grace to those who have said some hateful things because they are most likely struggling with something in their own lives, but we have to do better. We all need to give each other some grace and have empathy for those different from ourselves. We only learn more about ourselves when we encounter the richness of what humanity has to offer. Our own beliefs solidify when we encounter difference. I know in a public school, our children will encounter many ideas that are not necessarily compatible with our espoused, with those espoused by our own individual families, some from teachers and many from peers. It's hard as a parent to give up control and let our children have these unscripted encounters. We are Jewish, yet one of my son's good friends tell him often that Jesus is perfect. I have not complained to his teacher nor to the children's parent, the child's parents. Rather, this opens up a wonderful conversation at home about our belief system and how we respect and befriend people different from ourselves while holding on to our own beliefs. This is the gift of a public school. It allows for my Jewish, Jewish son with gay dads to befriend another child who is clearly, clearly loves attending church with her very large Catholic family. It is not what I expected, nor did I necessarily want to be discussing at home, but I appreciate that this family exists in the world. I would hope that other parents would welcome these types of encounters and help engage their own children in the diversity they will encounter outside the bubble of their own homes. My son and my family are enriched by this diversity that exists and is celebrated at our public school. I applaud the educators who have, who have to manage this diversity and all of the cultural differences that a public school affords. As a former educator, there is no amount of training that can prepare you for managing these types of encounters, but I can tell you from experience, chickering leaders either do it well or have the humility to seek help to make sure that all children feel welcome. Thank you to the school board for supporting the efforts to support all of our children from all of our backgrounds. I hope that in the year to come, you are able to continue this work, but also that our community lowers the temperature around these issues so that we can elevate all of the other important things that you are doing at our school. I am sorry for taking so much of your time, but I feel compelled to offer these words to the community so that we lift up the work that you are doing to be more inclusive. It is always messy in public education, and I call on my fellow parents and neighbors to lower the temperature so our children are surrounded by the love and support that I know every parent hopes for their children and their neighbors' children to receive. Thank you."
Thanks, Robert. Is there anybody else?
No.
Going once? Going twice? All right. Thank you, everybody. That closes the community comments section of the meeting. Appreciate all of your kind words and certainly things for us to focus on and think about in the year ahead. All right, so, next item, superintendent update.
Great. I'd like to thank all of our educators for coming, and you're welcome to stay for the remainder of the meeting, but don't feel obligated. I know that you have two and a half more days of reserve to rely on. Nobody wants a superintendent's report.
It's being livestreamed, Beth. They can watch it and listen to it, the whole ride.
Fantastic. There'll be a quiz on Friday afternoon. All right. Good evening, everyone. So my objective tonight is just to provide kind of some highlights from the school year and talk about the work that's going to happen over the summer and where we will pick up when we return in the fall. So I'll be discussing, like I said, highlights, provide a few personnel updates, summer projects, and planning for next year. So as you know, Denny and I were both new to our roles this year and had the opportunity to engage in the entry process. We have already provided to you our findings. I will not go over them all again tonight. You can take a deep breath. But just a reminder that our strategic objectives moving forward, we have five buckets that will be focusing our work for the next three to five years around excellence in innovation and learning, challenging and supporting all students, professional learning and growth for our educators, family and community engagement, and safe and sustainable spaces. That said, I just want to reiterate the strengths that I heard from talking with community members, parents, taxpayers, educators, students, administrators, everyone highlighted many of the same things that make Dover Sherburne so valuable. Those include our commitment to academic excellence and our desire to have a rigorous education for all students, the value and love we put on the Dover and Sherburne communities in terms of valuing education, being small, being supportive of each other. Our educators are certainly well-respected and appreciated by our community and our focus on the whole child, so balancing out, yes, the academic excellence and rigor, but also looking at the whole child and making sure that we're taking care of students' social emotional needs at the same time. This year, and other highlights, we had several community forums where we were able to discuss the findings of our equity audit and what diversity, equity, inclusion means in our classrooms. There are several resources that are available on the website. There's recordings, there's slides, there is a 50-page FAQ. Also, coming out of all of this work, both the entry plan and our community forums, it was an opportunity for our community to come together and say, "What is it that we really believe in?" So again, our goals, initiatives have grown over the last 10 years. So we want to make sure that all of our students achieve high levels of academic proficiency across a wide range of assessments, that they can demonstrate in many ways, that we want to make sure we're growing the skills and competencies in our portrait of a graduate, that we're nurturing the social emotional wellness of the whole child, and that we're preparing students for a diverse, rapidly changing world. So all of these discussions this year have landed us in the same place that we will continue to go back to. It's also made us realize what we believe in terms of teaching and learning. I won't go through all of these before because I know you've been on the forums and rewatched the recordings and all of the notes and all of those things. But I think it's important that when you go to the new DS website and it says, "Who is DS? We are DS." These are the principles that are going to be there in terms of what we believe in support of teaching and learning and as well as the idea of belonging for all of our students. So all of the opportunities we've had to engage in these conversations this year have landed us on these common principles that we all share. We've also had an opportunity to think about what our curriculum should include, and I don't want to take this slide away from Denny, but these are the pieces that underlie what it is that we use to develop a comprehensive, thoughtful curriculum. And this is the tool, or this outlines the tool that Denny's been using with all of our K-12 educators and looking at our entire curriculum to make sure that we're allowing for student voice, student agency, critical thinking, higher order skills, et cetera. So again, all of the discussion, all of the research, all of the work this year has landed us in this common place that we can always go back to. Excuse me for a second. Programs this year, as a reminder, we had our program reviews from DSE focused on English language learning, special education, and title grants, many without findings, and a few good reminders to move forward. We finished contract negotiations, and you'll be voting on not only our educators' contract, but three of our four association contracts this evening. We have a new website coming. I joke that it's called Denny's Website because he's been really leading the charge, but it's been a lot of work by Denny and by our assistant principals and many of our program leaders getting that up and running, and so hopefully that will have a soft launch in mid-July, and we'll be looking for feedback before it goes kind of viral in September. And also, after two years of research, we are bringing on a director of human resources that will be sharing with the town of Dover, perhaps with the town of Sherburne moving forward. We have extended an offer to an individual, and we are just working on kind of the points of the contract and negotiation. So we'll be announcing that person soon, and they will be starting in July, which is very exciting. All right. A few highlights surrounding academic excellence. Thanks to Denny's leadership and that of our principals and our K-12 PLC curriculum and department heads, we have identified best practices for teaching and learning in all four of our buildings. We'll be coming back together this August and having our instructional leaders look at the similarities. We've had that opportunity. We know that they're very similar and hashing out a K-12 list of best practices that you can expect in classrooms throughout a child's continuum of learning, obviously little tweaks as they get older and more independent. Denny has been working with the leaders on the curriculum audit. You'll get to hear more about that next year in terms of their findings and the tweaks that they've been doing. Very positive feedback from the teachers in regards to their feeling that it's made them a better teacher and thinking about the curriculum more holistically and meeting the needs of all learners in their classrooms. The elementary math pilot continues next year. We did small pieces of work with illustrative and eureka this year. Next year, our elementary educators will be working more comprehensively with illustrative math and reveal. So we're being very careful and thoughtful about the programs that we're exploring and looking at data and feedback before we make a final decision moving forward. We have several additional courses. I don't need to read all the slides to you, but especially at the high school level, we've rolled out new AP Computer Science, Forensic Science, and Financial Literacy continues to be the most popular course at the high school. So kudos to our department chairs and faculty for working on those. And coming soon, as a result of all the positive feedback we're getting from students about these expanded courses that are relevant, we have another AP Computer Science coming in a year or so, some business courses, an interdisciplinary course, and robotics. So lots new and exciting at DS HS. Several extracurricular achievements. I won't go over all of them, but we're third in the state in mock trial. The Science Olympiad did fantastic this year, our mock trial team, our robotics team is the largest to date. Our physics team placed first and second in the state. So many proud accomplishments for our students and their advisors. College matriculation, you have a list in your packet. Congratulations. All of our students graduated on June 1st. 96.6% of them are college-bound, so let's make sure that U.S. News gets that right this year. And we have one doing post-grad work, three heading on to work, and one still working on their plans. So excellent there. 85.5% of our seniors got into their top three schools, which is very typical. If you look at a 10-year average, we usually average 87.7 getting into their top three. This year is 85.5, not much of a variation. But if you'd like to spend some time with Mr. Smith at the high school, he will tell you that during the pandemic and coming out of the pandemic, colleges over-enrolled because they weren't sure who was actually going to come, and so now schools are under-enrolling because they have such large classes that are going to be juniors and seniors, they don't have the space. So that probably explains that fluctuation. But our kids continue to be able to do whatever it is they want to do, whether it's a gap year, go to their, the college that's the best fit for them, et cetera. In terms of student belonging, many thanks to Kate McCarthy, our Director of Student Services, who is here tonight. She's been doing phenomenal work with our principals, our coaches, our leaders in terms of especially the elementary level, having the data team meetings, looking at student data sets multiple times a year, identifying students who need short interventions, long interventions, and providing those interventions, and then seeing their growth in literacy and numeracy over the course of the year. So thank you for all of your work there, and that work will continue as we scale that up to the middle and high school and what that would look like. We're piloting the Elementary Fly Five curriculum, which is around bullying and social emotional learning, so we'll continue with that next year. Again, a phased-in approach, slow and steady. We did work with all of our educators Stop It, Name It, Claim It as a way of addressing bullying and bias-based incidents in the moment to just simply say, "Stop. What you're doing's not okay. Here's why, and let's not do it again." And we're hoping to roll that out with our students moving forward so that we can address things before they become big and ensure a sense of belonging for all of our kids. Safety care, or safety training, as you know, at the elementary level, we continue to work with our teachers on lockdown drills, and at the middle and high school, we recently partnered with Synergy 911 to do lockdown and barricading with our students, who all were very grateful for the opportunity. They feel empowered to be able to make decisions in the moment and are reassured that we have a plan. God forbid anything happen. And then all of the school-based initiatives, I won't go through them, but assemblies, all school meetings, turkey trots, the Bleacher Project for Inclusivity, peer mediation, so many things happening within our individual buildings to make sure that our students have a sense of belonging. Sense of normalcy this year, closest to normal we've been in a while. I see lots of nods over here. No masks, normal schedule, getting together, field trips, Broadmoor, Hale, MFA, JFK Library, Spain, Washington, DC. We had two different groups go. Our athletic program continues to be phenomenal in all of our sports, and as you know, our spring teams continue to win. We have, I think, was it, boys tennis out there right now, or girls tennis?
Girls tennis.
Girls tennis. Boys tennis was yesterday, they won, so they're continuing, and then we have boys and girls across continuing. So so many championships, so many All-Star athletes, and also opportunities for our captains to engage this year in leadership training about a number of things, both leadership skills as well as hazing, as well as inclusion and equity training. Fine and performing arts, I know you've been to all the shows, showstoppers, it's like going to Broadway on a discount, but SpongeBob, Music Man, One Act Plays, Radium Girls, so many concerts, Chocolate Cafe. Our kids have phenomenal opportunities thanks to our educators. Personnel updates, I won't go through all of them, but our building leaders have been busy hiring for all of our new positions, so congratulations on bringing in a new batch of phenomenal educators and support staff. I've had the opportunity to meet all of them as kind of their final stop, and I just get more excited every time I meet a new person. Summer projects, what's happening this summer? After Friday afternoon when everybody disappears, the rest of us will be here. Denny and I will be working a lot on the strategic planning. Again, we have those five buckets. We worked with our leaders to identify some initiatives, key initiatives under those five buckets. We need to kind of hash them out and make sure they're in a manageable timeline, work with our leadership team during the retreat, and then bring them back to you for the final strategic plan in September. We have our educators engaging in multiple workshop days this summer, individually, in teams, on anything related to the school improvement plans you've already heard about. Kate is busy working with our special education team, converting all of our special education data and IEPs into Aspen, and rolling out a new IEP format and process, so Kate's going to be busy this summer, but thank you for your efforts. And then Dawn has lots going on in terms of facilities. Chickering, we have classroom floor replacement, fire control panel upgrade, Pine Hill, the kitchen floor replacement, and energy management system upgrade, the region, high school floor replacement, the Linkless bathroom renovation, you all saw tile last week, and the middle school library renovation project thanks to the flood, so.
I'd also call that the middle school renovation, restoration project, because there's also work happening in other areas of the library.
Great. Classroom.
Insurance plan.
Thank you, Dawn, for doing that work. So next year, we will have a district strategy, which will inform superintendent and district goals. They'll be tied into the school improvement goals that you've already seen drafts of, which will continue, is the calendar task force, which has already had two meetings and has some materials prepared to send out to the larger community when we come back in September. We're going to continue to work on communication and transparency. Our website, Denny's website, will be key in that, but making sure that we are providing information about all of the academics and academic excellence that we do, as well as how we support kids and include them. and academic excellence that we do, as well as how we support kids and include them for a sense of belonging. We have space audits happening at the high school and the middle school as we are running out of space and need to be creative. And that will then happen at Pine Hill too, which as you know, Pine Hill is a beloved school, but may need a little extra TLC in the next 10 years or so. And we'll also be finally trying to un-mingle all of the data around start times. In came the pandemic, so it's hard to decide and determine what caused what and what didn't cause what, but we'll do the best we can next year, both looking at data as well as getting feedback from our families and educators. So, that's what I have on tap. Lastly, Because Kids. It's touching that all of our teachers were here this evening. So, I just want to take a few moments to recognize all of the people who give their heart and soul each and every day to the Dover Sherburne Public Schools. It doesn't just take one village to raise our students. In the case of Dover Sherburne, it takes two. Many thanks to our administrators, administrative assistants, athletic staff, bus drivers, business office, counselors, custodians, Dita, Sheeta, drama production crew, educational assistants, facility folks, food service, groundskeepers, IT team, librarians, nurses, school committee, special educators, specialists, substitutes, and teachers that make it happen. All of those people got us to this point in this year and I just want to say thank you. At the opening day assembly in August, I reminded our pre-K through 12 faculty of the reason we do this incredibly challenging and extremely rewarding work, Because Kids. Kids are inherently happy, innately curious, and instinctively creative. What better clients to have? Each child is a gift, an individual with a story, a student with distinct strengths and interests. I asked educators to listen to each of their students' theme songs, learn what motivates them, engage them in deep learning, celebrate their successes, and capture endless moments of joy throughout the school year. They did not disappoint. I want to thank everyone I listed for keeping kids at the center, for working to ensure all students feel a sense of belonging, have opportunities to achieve at high levels, and graduate prepared to navigate and thrive in a diverse multicultural world. While this work has not been easy, not been easy, we have done our best to balance academic rigor with inclusivity and kindness. Both are possible and both are necessary. When we return from summer vacation, I call the larger DS community to unite around our collective "Why," Because Kids, to work together constructively and collaboratively to advance the system in achieving its mission and strategic objectives, to support every student to discover and pursue their full potential. Kids are our greatest asset and our best hope for the future. Let's find a way to rally around them together. Thank you for all of your support and that's my update.
Thank you.
Thank you. Happy to take questions.
Got a question as much as a comment.
Go for it.
Earlier this evening, when many of our faculty members were here, I heard from many people something that, thinking about it, and I've been attending school committee meetings and between where we've lived and where I've worked in five different communities over the past 29 years, and I have never, one time, over hundreds of meetings, heard faculty members get up at the end of the school year and say thank you to their superintendent and their assistant superintendent. I've never heard that happen. And this is the end of your first year, Beth, and your first year, Denny. And I think it is exceptionally unusual that two first-year chief school administrators would have that level of gratitude and appreciation, particularly at the end of a difficult year, at the end of school contract negotiations, when oftentimes nerves are frayed, feelings are bruised, people are in different places. And I appreciate how much you thanked all, everybody else. And I just need to say a huge and very deep thank you to both of you. And that's not to say that, as a school committee person, and I don't like want to speak for everybody else, this isn't to say like, "Oh, we just yes you to death" for all the things that you might want to do. I think that we are, as a collective, we're pretty critical and Dawn has been sitting at hundreds and hundreds of school committee meetings as a member and an administrator in our school district for a long, long time. I am astonished and really, really happy and grateful for everything that you guys have done this year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? No? It's clear you've figured out a way to invent the eighth day of the week to be able to get off.
My goal is to find a way to sleep.
I don't know how you get that in the budget, but.
That's free. Extra 24 hours.
Thank you for that update. It's a nice summary of everything that has been achieved and is sort of on the docket here. Clearly, things are not stopping come Friday afternoon. Thank you. Any other questions and then we'll move on? Great. So, now we go into the voting and sort of review side of this meeting here. Just for new members, we don't ever vote as a joint school committee. That's just sort of a meeting itself. We do votes by the individual school committees. So, there's going to be a fair bit of administrivia in moving things around to different teams to do the reviews and votes. But bear with me, bear with us, and we'll get through it. So, the first is the second read on the Pine Hill Family Handbook for the Sherburne School Committee. So, the revisions were included in the packet. It was primarily just an update to the faculty members. And I guess I'd ask if anybody had any questions or comments on what was included in the package or after reading the full material.
Just to clarify, the updates are on page two of the packet. And the current website, the current handbook is the one that I found on the website today. I have the silliest remarks and they might have already been updated. I think page seven, and maybe this is on purpose, still notes that during COVID, all-school meeting will be on Zoom. Maybe that's fine to leave in, just wanted to note that. And I think page 38 needs to be updated for the current school committee. But I think that's all I could find. And you may want to leave page seven in because who knows what the future brings, but we're all in it together.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
So, I guess with Dr. Brown's initial proposals as well as those changes.
So, with those changes as well as Dr. Brown's proposal, I open a motion to approve the handbook with the proposed edits as well as the edits that are summarized in the proposal in the package.
So, this is for Sherburne to vote only?
For Sherburne.
Christine Moss, second.
Christine, second. Any discussion?
Can I vote? I didn't get a packet, so I haven't read it. Can I vote anyway? Because I trust Christine's edits.
Or you could abstain.
Or you can abstain. Yep.
So, who made the original motion? It has to be, you are our Sherburne person, okay?
I'm a Sherburne person. So, yes, you can either abstain or vote in favor. We did discuss the package during our original meeting, the first read. So, the only changes from that would be from what Christine has kind of summarized. So, Christine has seconded the motion. All in favor? And that's it. So, unanimous without a matter of.
Great, thanks.
Judy, for the middle school and.
As we're sitting here, I'm thinking, "I'm going to be up next." And I hadn't realized that until you started to, until you said, "May I have a motion?" But luckily, I've actually read all the changes. We got the first read on the high school. And we got, at our last meeting, the middle school, we got a flavor for what the changes are. So, I guess my question to the region is, let's start with the middle school handbook. Questions, issues, anything anyone wants to change? Things needs to be changed? I have to say, I think Maggie was on the committee that was working on this and they did a masterful job. Thank you, Maggie. Am I right about that?
Yes, but I didn't, don't thank me.
So, no.
Colleen had a question though.
Who?
Colleen.
Oh, Colleen.
Hi.
Thank you. Hi.
I just, I had a question. I wasn't there when the first read was done. So, the role on page 18 of the handbook, it has the role of fact fluency for students. That section has been removed. I was curious about the reasoning behind it. There's a role of reading for middle school students, followed by the role of fact fluency for students. And the fact fluency for math has been removed. I'm wondering if that's the thinking, if anybody knows the thinking behind that.
John, man.
Why don't you speak?
Okay, so, in middle school, often there's an expectation that students do independent reading as well as reading for whatever novel or book that they're reading in class. They no longer assign fact fluency for math facts at the middle school level. It's more integrated into whatever their math homework is. So, they felt that was kind of outdated and therefore took it out.
Okay. Okay, great.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, then, may I have a motion to approve the revisions to the Dover Sherburne Middle School Handbook?
Maggie, Sharon's over.
Second?
Colleen Burt.
Colleen Burt, second. All in favor? I think that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, let's move on to the high school handbook, which we had at our last meeting. And I think John Smith gave us some information about the changes. Is there any, are there any? Oh, I forgot to ask if there was discussion on the motion. Sorry. Is there any questions or discussion on the high school, the changes to the high school handbook? Sorry, I didn't look over.
No.
Okay. So, then, may I have a motion to approve the changes to the Dover Sherburne High School Handbook?
Mark Healy, so moved.
Can I have a second?
Angie Johnson, second.
Is there any discussion? No, hearing none. All in favor? Okay, and that is unanimous as well. Dennis, back to you.
This handoff. Great, thanks, everybody. So, next up is the DSEA memorandum of agreement. And summary there is just the summary of the negotiation with the Teachers Union. And we wanted to just present some of the sort of substantive updates from that negotiation. And to do that, Kate Potter has graciously agreed to summarize some of the.
Totally asking any remaining members to jump in as they would like to. Okay. So, first, I just want to say that we have three people who are missing because their terms ended, who were on our committee. So, Lynn Collins, who recently ended her term on the regional school committee, Gita Russo from Sherburne, and George Morrell, who represented the Sherburne, town of Sherburne on the select board side, have all just, they finished their term. So, they're not with us, but I want to, I want to give out a huge thanks to them. And in particular, to Lynn, and I hope she's listening, who was our chair and led us, you know, with deep thought, clarity, kept us on track, you know, made a million amazing slides and graphs that I don't know how to do and just really kept us moving along. So, thank you to all those people who are not here. And then next, I want to say, just real quick, this is my third time being on the school committee end of contract negotiations. And the first time, it was my first year on Sherburne School Committee and I was like a deer in the headlights when I said yes to it. I had no idea what it would entail and I learned a ton. Each cycle, it's, you know, some people are the same, some are different. But what has always remained the same, which, which I think is very Dover Sherburne, is the commitment of both sides to really try to understand where the other is coming from. And, you know, negotiating anything gets sticky and there were sticky moments, there always are. But we were able to come back and say, "Okay, this means a lot to you and maybe we're not totally understanding why." Or, "This is really, really complicated for the school district and maybe we haven't explained why well enough." And, and I just felt like I was so impressed with both sides for coming together and it was a pleasure to be a part of that. So, I know, I understand a lot of the teachers left. I'm glad some are still here. So, please relay our thanks to the rest of your team. Okay, with that, our guiding principles were to provide a fair and equitable increase to our educators to remain competitive with our agreed-upon comparable districts, of course, to maintain all of our amazing programs and services, to respect the town's finances, which is tough, I was just talking about. You know, we have Dover and Sherburne. The two select board members really helped both groups understand the money side of it. There's only so much, so how are we going to parse that out? And of course, to keep our contract language current with any changes in federal and state legislation. Thank you. So, where we ended up is teachers are on a matrix salary scale. So, for fiscal year '24, '25, and '26, we came to agree on a 2.75 increase plus $300 per step in the matrix, which equates to about 3.05% increase overall for all three years. And then for appendix C, which is mainly coaches, drama programs outside of the school day folks, FY '24, a rate of increase of about 2.6, '25, 1.6, '26, 1.6. Does anyone have questions about that? Or do you want to jump in at all, Dennis or Beth or Dawn, before we?
So, I think, well, it may seem simple, that it's sort of a relatively straightforward sort of increase over the course of the three-year contract. So, again, one point, the contract covers a three-year period and we kind of negotiated for each one of those increments for each year during the contract. One of the stated goals here from a financial point of view was to obviously maintain sort of a fiscally responsible sort of standpoint from a town finances perspective. But we also have a goal to remain competitive with our comparable districts, as Kate had mentioned. And I think we spent a heck of a lot of time looking at the comparable districts. Not all the districts have settled their contracts, but we've tried to do some work to sort of model out where they may land as well as using data from districts that already have agreed contracts or in the middle of an agreed contract. And our goal is maybe not to be at the highest, but we wanted to be sort of right there in the middle and recognize financially, as well as with a lot of the other elements of the contract, how much we value sort of the educators that are here, coming in every day. I'll say where we landed was within tenths of a percent of that top sort of grouping of comparable districts. So, we are where we want to be, but very, very competitive with what we would consider our comparable districts. And that comparable district grouping is something that we agree with the DSEA at the beginning to set some norms and expectations around how the sort of negotiation would continue. So, I think from a financial terms perspective, I think it kind of made sense in the context of how we built the budgets. The budgets, a lot of them had already started rolling through the various committees and approvals, both within the committees here as well as in the towns. So, we had sort of established sort of a kind of general range. Things are getting tight with inflation and other kinds of things. So, we needed to kind of make sure that we took a lot of different factors into consideration, so.
Thank you for adding that detail. Any questions on that before we move?
I think the next slide helps explain it all.
Okay. Would you like to take the next slide, Dawn? Or Dennis?
Sure, Dennis.
Sure. So, the base salary for all districts in FY '23 is 22.9 million. The step increase, so as Kate had mentioned, there's kind of two attributes of the financial increase from sort of a remuneration perspective. The first are steps. So, as you progress through your tenure and levels of education attained, those increases for this year in FY '24, for FY '24. FY '24 is what's pictured here, amount to about $376,000 of increase, which represents about 1.6%. The COLA increase or cost of living increase is sort of a flat on the top percentage, which is that 2.75 that Kate had mentioned earlier. That represents about 642,000 of additional costs. And then the 300,000, which, which Kate had mentioned, is sort of added on to that COLA, represents just under $70,000 of cost or 0.3%. So when you take all of that together, the FY '24 educator cost is roughly $24 million and change or 4.74% increase, which is within range of where many other sort of constituencies within the towns are, are seeing sort of remuneration increase. One other kind of point that I'll mention, there's, on the agenda, you'll see a lot of different contracts that have gone through. This is just focused on the educator contract. We'll go through some of the finer points on some of the other contracts as well. So we're kind of talking about educator specific.
That's a good point. Any questions on that? Okay. Okay, so then I'm not going to read all of this, but some other things in the contract, summer curriculum work. We added compensation or a larger compensation for days that teachers have to move their classroom, largely at the elementary school. Takes a lot of time, I remember doing it myself a long time ago, to move your entire classroom to another room. Maternity and parental leave, we've changed to parental and child rearing leave and really just, this aligns with being more inclusive for all parents, birth mothers, fathers, adoptive parents, foster parents. Eight weeks of leave for all parents using your create sick days and personal days. Professional development, educators hired after June 30th, 2023 will be required to complete a course on DEI or culturally responsive teaching within the first years of employment. The cost of the course will be covered by the district and will, and they will, the educator will receive three credits toward a lane change, which is part of the matrix. Same opportunity is also available to current educators. And then new hires incorporates existing mentoring and induction program, but we make it a little more formal, allowing a second year of mentoring for new educators, well educators new to teaching. Non-financial agreements, there's always some housekeeping. Really, it's just updating language, making changes that just make more sense. You know, for example, you mentioned, or somebody mentioned the COVID language, you know, changing things that are, we're not dealing with anymore. Cafeteria duty, redefining the term duties more clearly and eliminate outdated language regarding volunteers, number of volunteers needed for certain duties. Article 16 textbooks really just reflects an update of current teaching that it's not just textbooks, it's instructional materials. There are a lot of things online now that we are renewing. And then salaries, loss of prep time, we changed that to planning and non-teaching time. So clarify the language around elementary loss of prep time. And then our insurance and annuity plan, we expanded our offerings to include 457 smart plan and Roth options. We have a memorandum of understanding to work with the educators on a joint advisory committee on special education, which we were calling JAXE, agreed to, to begin in 30 days after ratifying the contract with the purpose to review current workloads and schedules of special educators, service providers, specialized program liaisons, and to make sure they're, you know, within current contract language and work conditions. The committee will meet at least twice a month and complete their work no later than February, end of February 2024. And then proposed recommendations will be presented to the administration for consideration as, and implementation as approved. How do we measure up? We feel that this contract has kept us competitive with our comparable districts for hiring and retaining staff, as Dennis mentioned. We feel it's respectful of both town finances. Neither town had any appetite to have an override to make this contract work and we were able to do that. We felt that we were able to work collaboratively with the union's concerns and the, the educators ratified the contract by 85% of the, with the DSEA members, which we were very happy about. And then outside of that, of course, it aligns with contract language, applicable state, federal statutes, and future operational needs of the district. And then just a thank you, I've already done some of this, but I mentioned Lynn, I mentioned Gita and George, who are, who have all rolled off. But thanks to the rest of the committee who are here, Dennis, Jeff, Liz, Robin Hunter, who represented the town of Dover Select Board, I hope I'm not forgetting. Well, yourself, Beth, Beth Dawn, and, and our lawyer, of course. And then the educators team, who, as I mentioned, were great to work with. Rob Williamson was the chair, Lainey Glenn, Judy Guin, Amanda Rogers, Christine Atkinson, Anna Sawan, Pam Ritchie, and Anna Martinetti, and other support, Jon Stein, our school lawyer, Beth Dawn, and Carl Stam is the DSEA union rep. So anybody, did I leave anything out? Who, any of the team members who are still here?
The only sentiment I'd say is that a lot of the things that you rattled through were, I think, things that were in the summary of Dawn's sort of presentation of things that either we're trying to tackle this year or we have on the docket. I think a lot of the things that the DSEA brought up were kind of initiatives that either in one way, shape, or form, we're sort of moving forward. But I think we use this to sort of clarify some expectations and get some language in the contract to make sure that, you know, everybody feels as though that, you know, it's formalized and has the energy behind it that it, that it needs. So, yeah, thank you for that summary.
No, I hope it didn't move too quickly. I just, it's a lot of information. Happy to entertain any questions.
I just want to, I just have one comment.
We can stop, Dennis.
I, I said this, I've said this a number of times this evening. I, I do this work for a living. I'm an employment lawyer. And it's unusual that the two sides to a collective bargaining, after having bargained for a year, come together in this kind of a, as Judy Guin called it, kumbaya moment, is really special. And it really speaks to the collaborative work that you're, that the committee did and how it's not easy, but you guys must have done a really spectacular job. And so, thank you.
Thank you. Well, and I have to say, it was very much coming from both sides. So we, we felt really lucky to work with this team of educators. And, yeah, I think, you know, it wasn't always kumbaya, but it was always respectful. It was always kind. And we got to, we tried really hard to get to a place of understanding and so.
Agreed. So just a little bit of administrative here. So what we're voting on tonight is a memorandum, memorandum of agreement. That's not the actual contract. The, I'm going to kind of give a wave cap and if there's anything that I missed on, maybe you can kind of clarify. So that sort of summarizes all of the salient points in the contract we'll be working through to actually get the contract papered and then signed. I think the chairs for each one of the committees?
Right.
And that will happen in, in due course. But I think it feels good to be kind of coming out of the school year and into the next with a, with a contract that sets us up for huge success, I think, over the next couple of years and driving forward a lot of the good initiatives that we've talked about tonight. Anything, Dawn, sort of administrative that?
Right. No, so you're just, you're just approving or ratifying the changes that were agreed upon by the two, the two working groups together. So you're just ratifying what they agreed to.
Just one thing I left out is that the three people who I mentioned who, who rolled off all voted in favor of this contract.
And typically, I would say both town select board members would be here tonight, but obviously George rolled off. Robin had planned to be here but had a family medical emergency. But if they were joined us, they would be voting with each of the committees that they team up with. So Robin with Dover and George would have voted with Sherburne. And then George, Sherburne's time to vote with the region, so George would have voted with the region. So just pretend like they're here and they're doing that vote because that's typically how that plays out.
So this is where we vote by school committee. So we're going to go here. So we'll start with Sherburne. I'd like to request a motion to approve the DSEA memorandum of agreement as summarized by, by Kate Potter.
Christine Walsh, so moved.
Great, second.
Kristen Aberley, second.
Thank you, Christine. Kristen. All in favor?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Judy, do you want to take us for the region?
May I have a motion from the region to ratify the memorandum of agreement between these, our three school committees and the DSEA?
Colleen Burt, so moved.
Can I have a second?
Mark Healy, second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, that's a unanimous vote.
And Liz for Dover.
May I have the same motion for the Dover School Committee?
Only except there's a.
So moved.
Second?
Jeff Cassidy, second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? So that's, motion carries with unanimous consent.
Great. Thank you, Judy. Congratulations.
Look at the word back.
We have 100% modification.
Is there, is there a prize for that?
We don't owe that, right?
Yeah, you're right.
I mean, you know, I think that, thank you guys, all of you. And also, it's huge to be able to get a contract that allows us to move forward without overrides. That's a big deal in all of our communities. And, and stay competitive with other towns. Because the reality is that there are not thousands and thousands of extra people banging down the doors to be teachers right now. And so it makes me feel much better to sleep at night, to know that we're offering a competitive package to our educators. And hopefully that will encourage them to stick with us or come to us. Not every town in our neighborhood has been able to accomplish this. So, thank you.
Thank you. It was a lot of time on both sides and appreciate everybody sticking with it and making their schedule available. I think we started October.
All right. So the next item of business is the, the association memorandum of agreement
for the administrative assistance, custodians, food service, and educational assistance.
So we only have the three tonight. So we are hoping to have educational assistance, but it's not ready. But we do have three to share with you this evening. And the are negotiations that Beth and I both run with representatives from each of these bargaining units. What I've tried to do for you, and I apologize, I didn't realize until later this afternoon, that the memorandum of agreement was just a duplicate of the DSEA memorandum. Not all of these individuals, but if you look at the packet now, they're there. So, but to put some perspective around it, the cover memo that I included for you, so for the administrative assistants, we're looking at a total of 13 employees. The custodial is 20 and the food service is 15. So that gives you, that should put some perspective on this for you as we talk about these things tonight. With these bargaining units, I think the biggest hurdle we had is what's going on in the labor market right now and the economy in general for these particular employment groups. So we worked, I think the ask came in here and we tried to meet them somewhere where we could, but we also want to be able to keep our positions filled. As I've been saying of all the school committee, different school committees, it's been a struggle for us to keep our custodial staff completely filled. We're still not completely filled. And so in all three of these, we were trying to make sure that our entry rate was attractive, but we also wanted to show value to those who stayed with us and give substantial increases that would allow them to continue living with the high economic inflation, knowing that it may subside, but the, when you look at their starting rates, it's at a, that's that part where you may struggle with, with just the cost of living. So some of the numbers may look sort of large and the percentages may look large, but at the same time, you've got to put that perspective of how many people we are providing this for. So on the administrative assistance, it's comprised of both, we have both 12-month employees and 10-month school employees. And with the agreed upon language, we upped their starting rates, you'll see in there. And we also gave, rather than a COLA, we gave a dollar increase and that really reflected a little bit of the market adjustment to the starting rate. So they're seeing anywhere from 4.1 to 5.7% increase. We don't have steps. So if you look at larger school districts who have many more employees in these bargaining units, you will notice that they have steps. So as they look similar to what you saw in the matrix for educators. We don't go to that extreme because it becomes more complicated than we need to. But that's where we bring the longevity in. You probably won't see very many employment contracts around that have a longevity as early as three years. But to us, that's sort of our step. So we do three, five, 10, 15, 20. We're adding a 25 actually for the administrative assistance next year. And that's where we actually also were able to increase those amounts a little bit to give additional financial support. It's not built into the hourly rate, but it's a nice bump to your paycheck when that gets paid. So that is really basically, the admin assistance were pretty straightforward. We increased our starting rate. And what we did once we settled with the educators, as you noticed, we had almost like a 3% for year one, year two, year three. We were equitable in year two and three with all of the other bargaining units. And you'll see three across the board for years two and three. We actually were able to go back to, say, the administrative assistants who had bargained for something last and we gave them the gift of the 3% because we really wanted to be equitable across all the groups. So that's administrative assistance. The custodians, as I mentioned, we definitely needed to bump up our starting rates in that arena. So you'll see, if you look at their, we schedule an increase to both the day shift supervisor, the evening shift supervisor, but the largest ones to our custodians. And then the day themselves at that, at that level. So it's really our evening staff who clean most of the schools in the night are getting a $2 an hour increase. And we've also increased the shift differential. We did a lot of research on the shift differential and the dollar is competitive. It's not the top, but it is competitive. And so what happens when they work the school shift hours, say, two to 10 or three to 11, they'll get an additional dollar on every hour. But when they switch to the summers and work days, they don't get that dollar. So that's the shift differential. They're seeing increases, the head custodians are seeing increases from the range of 3.6 to 6.5. And our regular main custodian staff is seeing an average of 10%. And we doubled the longevity there. So that's a huge impact on an individual, but doesn't have a huge impact on our budget. So that's where I feel like we find the places where we can put dollars in their pocket that actually doesn't, you know, burden our budget. So that was the custodial. The food service, again, we cannot thank them enough. I think we have an excellent food service program here in all three schools. Participation has skyrocketed. Mainly, we, we provide good food, but also because of universal free lunch. So they are all working more than they did. We're producing many more meals than we used to. And we're lucky to have a very. We're producing many more meals than we used to, and we're lucky to have a very seasoned staff. And so we worked with them to make sure that we could retain them, and they wouldn't want to go to another district. So for the food service, I think one of the key things that we did, and we only did this because we looked at area food service programs, and there are, I couldn't really find that many that didn't have sort of paid time off. We don't have vacation really for our 10-month employees, but they work sort of a shorter, they don't work a normal school day, a little bit shorter, if you think about the choppiness of their work schedule. So in order to make it more financially feasible for them, you will see other area school districts have sort of paid time off, and it usually corresponds with like the vacation, like they'll get paid February vacation, April vacation. So we did sort of go down that path and added sort of two levels. So there's a five-year and a seven-year, I believe, and gave them the April break or February break, and then February, April, the longer that they've been here. All but two people or three people currently in the 15 actually qualify for that, so that was a nice financial benefit for them. We have been working with the food service, if you remember, if you were here three years ago, we were trying to keep up with the increase in the minimum wage, because that's sort of the level of sort of our food service starting people are. So we did a dollar, like a dollar, $75, those three years. Luckily, we did that because it kept us at least in the game, right? But we had to continue to do that increase for them. So they're seeing an increase all in between the paid time off, a little bit of a boost in their longevity, and the increase in the starting rates of anywhere between 7 and 16%. Obviously, those on the lower scale are seeing a higher increase because if they if they qualify for an extra week, that means they're seeing the 16%. They have all already received their contracts, and I will say, we're beginning thank yous from the staff, so, you know, that obviously makes us feel feel really good. And I think Beth and I, for the most part, it was a, it was sort of a pleasure to work with them, these three. The the EA's, we were, we actually put forward a change to sort of the whole EA setup, and that's what's slowing this down. So when we do bring that forward to you, and it either will be, if we have some other items, we may schedule a special meeting, otherwise there's no problem for us to wait until the reconvene in September. You'll be looking at a one-year contract, because in it is a memorandum of agreement to sort of study what we wanted to do and sort of changing the classifications and spending more time and more collaboratively deciding how we go with that. So I think we're close trying to get it in for tonight, but we will share it with you once we have it, and then we can vote next time we're all together. But we are asking tonight for you to approve the three tentative agreements for the administrative assistance, the custodial, and the food service, which all encompass three years.
Thank you. Sorry. Any questions?
Can we vote as a, can we vote all three? Do we have to do six, or can we do three?
We can do it as a package.
Yeah, that was my, yeah.
We don't typically all have them, you know, we, they sort of come in pieces, but tonight we have them all together.
Thank you. And I'd just like to thank Dawn. I haven't found an eighth day in the week yet, but I do have Kate and Dawn and Denny near me, and when all of the balls are coming at me and I'm still trying to juggle the ones I'm aware of, Dawn always would say, timeout, we need to do this. So thank you for keeping us on schedule and moving forward and doing all the research. I wouldn't have been able to do this without you, so thank you.
My pleasure. This is my third time doing this. Believe it or not.
I just wanted to thank you guys. It sounds like you work really hard to take good care of our people, and it's nice to feel good about stuff like this. So, thank you.
Commentary, questions? Nope. All right. Okay, so this will be another vote by by committee. So Sherburne first, I'd like to request the motion to approve the tentative agreements for the administrative assistance, the custodians, and food service groups for each for a three year period.
Christine Walsh, so moved.
Thank you, Christine, second.
Kristin Aberley, second.
Kristin, thank you. Any discussion? Nope. All right, all those in favor? Unanimous.
It's because you look this way first, you know? You guys wouldn't read that.
I'll throw a curveball, but it's nowhere.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve the memorandums of, is it memoranda or memorandums of understanding?
I checked it. They did it correct.
It is memorandums. Of agreement for the agreements for the administrative assistance, custodial, and food service staff.
Angie Johnson, so moved.
May I have a second?
Kate Potter, second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, unanimous.
Thank you, Judy.
May I have the same motion for the Dover? Anybody?
Martha Castle, so moved.
Second?
Cassidy, second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries with unanimous consent.
And I'll just ask for each three chairs to come and see me, because I actually have them all here ready for your signature.
All right. Liz, do you want to bring this one?
Do you want to explain?
Yeah, so the next item is a consent agenda, so that includes two things, both the minutes for the April 4th and 26th meetings, as well as to appoint Beth to the tech and accept board of directors. I asked Beth to give a quick overview for those that may need to rush it up or some new members, what those, what the tech and accept groups are.
Okay, so as a district, we belong to two collaboratives, so that for the students that we are unable to meet their needs within the district, they, some of them go to private placements, other public school placements, and several of them go to both the accept or tech collaborative to be educated there. So any members of the tech and accept collaboratives have a member, have a representative who sits on their board of directors, typically that's the superintendent. So this would be an opportunity for you to point me to sit on the tech board of directors and the accept board of directors to represent the district in their work for our students.
They provide us professional development too, right?
They do, yes, thank you.
For the school, the educators and stuff, so that's kind of all.
Except as your transportation for all of our out-of-district students, which is huge.
As well as buying options in terms of buying in bulk and.
Tech has all the bid, so all of our school supplies and everything goes through cooperative, gets bid through tech as a group. So if you think about all the school districts coming together, we do get great prices through that bidding, and that's where I actually get the Dover oil. Tech does that for us.
Oh, wow. Could, can I buy oil?
No. $2 a quart.
Yeah, so both those collaborators are incredibly important. For those new, you'll hear a lot about those referenced kind of in the meetings throughout the throughout the coming year, and that's kind of our, what that's about. All right, so consent agenda again by committee, Sherburne first, so I'd request a motion to approve both items on the consent agenda for this evening.
Christine Walsh, so moved.
Again, good at this. Thank you, Kristin. And a second?
Kristin Aberley, second.
Thank you, Kristin. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Oh, sorry.
Unanimous.
Great.
Thank you. Liz?
May I have the same motion for the Dover School Committee?
Jeff Cassidy.
Thank you, second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries with unanimous consent.
Thanks, Liz. Judy?
May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So tight.
Do I have to say what it is? The minute, do it, what?
Oh, my goodness.
You're good.
What?
She's betting, she's betting.
Yes, yes, motion so moved.
Oh, I'm losing it. Your second?
Kate Potter, second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Passes unanimously.
Great. All right, a lot of work going on here. So last item before we adjourn, just communications, so if anybody has any fancy dinner plans next year, make sure you check the school committee calendar, there's a lot of meetings out there.
Fewer than this year.
What's that?
Fewer than this year.
Really?
Give it six months. But thank you guys for posting that up for us to take a look at. The matriculation report, pretty impressive.
It's so amazing.
It's so great.
Alaska Pacific, I want to talk to them.
Yeah, no kidding.
I don't know who you are, but I want to know all about it.
Very awesome. International schools, if anybody wants to travel, we have friends in a lot of places now.
And then the reason the package was so long, there were a lot of additional sort of materials, summaries about tech and except were in there as well. Good reads to kind of get a little bit more background on what those are and how we how we integrated with that. Anything else? Nope? All right. So I think we will.
We've to move to adjourn.
Unanimous, what is it? They, do we need to vote to adjourn?
It's all unanimous, like, yeah.
Unanimously, do we adjourn?
Seems to delay the vote.
Eight, thirteen? Yes. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're all out.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.